Okay, hey, look at that, it's nine o'clock. I'd like to open up this special meeting for Selectman. Today, Thursday, the twenty-third of March at nine AM. So the purpose of this meeting is to go through the budget. Can you have your budget already pulled up?
Yep.
Again. All right, so we are gonna start in, I can just go through the whole thing. We have the annual budget report, Kim Barron, but Kim Barron may come in. I did have her on, oh, she is coming in, perfect. When we go to executive session, we will pick her out, but if we need any other details up and above what we have, she's got seventy-three books with her, which I assume are all the breakdowns of every line item here.
Like a college kid.
So the only thing that I'm gonna hold back on for executive session is the salary increases. There is one built into that. Talk about that at that time, so Kim Barron, we're friends over here.
Dog fight going on up there.
Yeah, I bet.
Okay, so whenever you guys need to, you wanna go into executive session, please let me know.
I think you're gonna tell us when we're gonna get to that.
Yeah, I figure, I figure we'll run through the whole thing and then we'll leave that for a little bit later.
Yep.
It might be a little bit tough if you guys don't know the percentage, because you guys don't know the percentage increase is built into this. So it's tough to know what the median is.
Okay, so just tell me which document you're gonna go through first.
Cause I. All right, okay, now we can kinda go through it. So we're gonna start on page one of three in the proposed budget.
So just so you know, I don't have them that way. I have them as separate documents, so.
This is the one that starts off general government, this is basically the whole.
So Kim, I have the, you know what, you sent me, so I've got mill rate scenario, projected revenue with visual, projected budget with other info, proposed capital.
Yeah, the budget, the budget document with, there's, you'll have the three-page budget document with some charts and.
So the projected revenue with, no, projected budget with other?
Yes, yes.
Okay, most budget. Yep.
You have it?
I do.
Get kicked out of the meeting.
Children.
Okay, now our. Okay, so are you ready? You have it? Starts off general government, Selectman salaries?
Yep.
Okay, so, starting off, Selectman salaries, just regular normal salary increase, grant curement. This is increased five thousand dollars. There's a two percent of grants that are issued that go back. Because of the success with grants and the potential for more grants, we just kinda built this into it. The benefit to the town would be extreme. We've already, between the bridges and all, well over a million dollars last year, just in grants.
Yeah.
Selectman's office, there is an increase here for HR, that we're hiring paychecks to help us with our job descriptions, our policy and procedure manuals, and our ethics policy. There is also an increase for Julie for the notes and minutes that she does. She gets paid out of that Y. Finance director, treasurer is kind of an inflated line at fourteen point oh nine. That's for an increased hours in our assistant treasurer, as well as an increase in pay for our assistant treasurer. Town clerks increase, Muffy? Muffy Munson?
Yep.
Next line, eleven point five six, this town clerk does include some software. I do have Jim, Jimmy Herba on standby. He can, a little bit is Greek to me, because of all the different programs and how we're moving forward with security, moving more to the cloud, and automating more systems. We have tax collector with our normal increase. And with Aaron Light, and you'll see this on the assessor as well, with Jamie Hatch. They have not only just an increase, but they have with the assessor added hours. They also get a dollar more per course they complete, so that's been built into that. That's why you'll see an inflated percentage. Everything else is pretty good from a Board of Assessment Appeals, Board Finance, Building Department, just normal increases. Postage delivery has gone up, and we're just including that for extra postage. Town Hall is up nine point three four for data processing support. Elections.
So, I'm sorry, can I? So, the Town Hall is up thirteen point five eight?
Correct, I read the wrong line.
Yeah, okay, and that was due to?
This is basically software support. And I can have Jimmy come into that for that explanation. There is also a salary increase in that line.
Yeah, I think we might.
Clerk's software is what's gonna be changed from co-file to IQS. This is a change in program as well. Does that make sense?
That's in the town clerk.
I have Town Hall also for that. Oh, I'm sorry, that cloud, so this is our other software.
Yeah, I think it would be good, just for the record, to have him.
That's why I have him on standby, because I have a list of all, like, I co-file to IQS.
Oh, okay.
Get into Microsoft three sixty-five, introduction of Civic Plus, QDS Cloud Software, by Veracuda Firewall, Remote PC, the fiber optic network, which we're gonna move, so all that is kinda built into that Y.
So my question, a question I have is, on a couple of these increases, then, would they be temporary? Or does it cost that much more to run them?
It's a combination of both. There usually is a setup fee, it could be a couple thousand dollars, but then, once you're buying the subscription and the maintenance, that's gonna also increase an overall operational cost, correct?
Okay.
And if I can just add something here, the software that's germane to each department, it's usually that support is in their budget. And those numbers don't normally change. I mean, I don't think we, we used to buy software, we'd buy it for a price, and then we'd have support going forward in the lines. Don't really do that anymore because of the way the software is hosted, web hosted in the cloud.
Right.
So whatever the cost is, it's gonna be going forward.
Yeah.
So for an example, for the treasurer, we have a ClearGo is your financing software, and that is gonna fall under the treasurer line.
Right, yeah, good.
Like she said, that's germane to that department.
Great, yep.
The next increase is nine point three four for elections. As you may know, the pending legislation, we're looking for a little bit more guidance on that, but there's some built-in extra hours into that as well. The auditor has stayed flat. There is a twenty percent increase in legal fees. That's an increase in our attorney's fees, animal control.
Sure we have enough?
Wait, I didn't hear what he said. What was that?
Sure you have enough for a.
No, 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 not sure. Hopefully, I hope, hopefully, we won't have yearly to things.
Well, the sweatpants can be expensive.
Yeah. Um, well, we're gonna get to that, because now we're gonna go to boards and commissions. So any questions on the general government part of it? Does it make sense?
No.
No questions, it does make sense. I'm sorry.
Yes, it does, sorry, it does make sense, thank you.
We were all looking at you like, what doesn't make sense? Okay. And that's fine, and we can go back to this, because once we get into the detail, we'll make more corrections. I just wanna fly through this whole thing, and then we'll see where we stand.
Okay, good.
Land use conservation is an increase in hours. There's also two people that are increased, we'll get into that later. Planning is a small increase, again, a hundred dollars extra. Zoning, there's a three hundred dollar reduction in advertising. Zoning appeal stays flat. Conservation stays flat. Inland wetlands, two hundred and seventy-nine percent, point five percent increase is for add to add consultants, which I think is great. Volunteer recognition stays flat, historic buildings, senior, and we can get into that, and senior programs went up slightly. The library, for their request, we're up three point one four. The library other represents the benefit, the increased benefits. Lake Lillona Authority, this was talked about last year, and now again this year, they are trying to increase their capital, so they can start to put away money for more boats, more coverage on Lake Lillona. After-school arts program, Recreation Commission has a twenty point eight three increase due to more events, more movie nights, some extra equipment. And then the swim pond improvements, when we get into the detail, I'll talk about that more. This is referring to the pond that's on the land trust property off River Road. What I'd like to propose is that we do away with that line and move it into parks. Take the same total, but move it into the parks.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with that.
It seems like it's, you know, we're not gonna get that going again. I think it's inevitable that with the bacteria, how we'd have to flow it in order to make it safe, there's just too big of an investment.
Yep, I think it's just good as a fishing pond.
Yeah, yep, exactly. Okay, page two of three. Public Works salaries, town roads paved, slight increase there. Where the bigger increase is, the twenty percent for winter maintenance, this is a salt increase, a sand increase. Town road is unimproved, a small increase, winter maintenance, again, you're gonna see that reflected in a cost of material. The town road salt, and then more, M-O-R-E, maintenance or repair expense, is the increase in tires and fuel. We still have the survey engineer. I actually met with T. Michael Alex today, and I can follow you guys up with some of that at the next meeting. Tree maintenance, we're tagging fifty thousand dollars. And then town parks, that's for cleaning parking lot, septic, the general maintenance that we have. And that's where we would also move, we'd see a higher increase if we moved the swimming pond over to that line as well. Okay, there's an increase in, by the way, any questions on highway public works, most of that's contractual. We're just seeing material increases to those side. Town police, there's a pretty good increase there. What, as we're going through our policies and procedures, one of the things that we're doing is looking at, following the Bridgewater model, if you will, so we have set holidays, so whether you're working or not, you're still gonna be able to have that holiday pay. So we're gonna build in six holidays, as well as there's some extra money for town private duty. And instead of having people wanting to take a, just a holiday so they get the deferment, every day would be treated as anyone else, and they'd all get the same amount of holidays, which is kind of a nice consistent way. Fair, so whether you work that day or not, you'd still get recognized for that holiday. Okay, the next big line is ambulance paramedic, ninety-eight thousand one forty-seven. I know we've talked about that at several board selection meetings. If you guys have any questions, it looks like that contract should be executed in the next week or two. The fire department increase is very, very small, point seven three percent. We wanna thank them for their service.
Can I just interject here? So, so the fire department turned their budget in a couple of days ago, and they asked for a decrease. So I said, well, the budget's gone to the selectmen, so it's gonna go back to sixty-five, six fifty. They, they asked that they, their overall budget be reduced by two thousand two hundred fifty dollars.
So they asked it to be reduced?
Right, they asked it to be reduced. I was just carrying over what they had budgeted last year. And so now they're looking for a reduction, so. So you'll have to kinda vote on that, so I can change it.
Go forward. Okay. Okay, so then Fire Marshal Insurance is a reduction. That's due to our insurance, we have over projected, so that's, it should be reduced now. And civil preparedness has a reduction as well, but again, terribly huge. This is as we're getting away from COVID, so that makes it, we were planning, we should now reduce. Any questions on that section?
Nope.
All right, health and welfare is pretty well there. Visiting nurses, vital stats, we do have an increase for our nonprofits, and I do have a list of the nonprofits that we actually help out. Well, I can go over that later, we'll continue to go through it. Elderly disabled, transport is additional drivers. And then down to transfer station, hauling fee reduction, negotiating with Stone, and we got a reduction in hauling fees, although this negative does also include an increase in tipping fees, but it is in net minus. Okay, page three. The personal benefits is the Teamster increase, but there is one reduction, which is a little askew, which is the pensions, and that was an overestimated number. For our miscellaneous holdings, land acquisition stayed flat, ordinance codification stayed flat, copy of facts, everything stayed flat. Okay, that being said, the total operating budget, we show an increase of six point one three to two hundred and forty thousand dollars, our capital improvement, which we will cover next, is an increase of two point seven five, which brings us to a total increase of five point four one or two hundred and seventy thousand. Region twelve is up eighty-eight thousand six twenty, which is a one point two nine increase. I will say that we are the benefactor. Bridgewater has a considerably larger increase, and so does Washington. We were the lucky dog. And with everything, the total budget increase is three hundred and fifty-eight thousand from a total budget of twelve million one hundred ninety-nine oh eight oh, which is an increase of three point three percent.
What, what was the school budget increase?
Eighty-eight thousand six twenty.
No, but I mean overall, region twelve.
Four.
Four percent?
Yeah. Yeah.
Cause I know they came out and said people are gonna be shot.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, it was definitely an increase. I think last year, they maybe presented a two percent, so this is a little bit more of an increase. It's nearly seven hundred thousand dollars of an increase for Bridgewater.
Oh my gosh.
Just to let you know. Well, you know, I'll give you this comment just to make you feel better. I did have a talk, and even with Curtis, and he said, you know, he's been in office for a while. A lot of the things that he wanted to get done, he can get done, other things he can hold off, but because he's been able to, you know, plan for this, they've known that they've had an increase, they know that they're going to have this additional fee, so one of the things they welcomed was to have kids in their community, so it's money well spent. I know it's a good thing, but they're, you know, in a different position. I could go through the graphs and all if you want, if you wanna keep going through the board, but all this basically is a percentage of where we spend from an operating cost from a total budget. Okay, so.
This is great. My only question is, when does Lake Lillona Authority stop?
I agree.
Yes.
You're trying to add additional boats, I know.
They're building their own little pike them, and we have no say over.
We don't have any say, and quite frankly, we pay a higher percentage, because we only have, if you look at how much other towns pay, now, we only pay half of it.
Right.
Of everyone else's. But we have considerably less shoreline, like, none, basically.
Wood and access, I agree.
That's the thing, you know, I was gonna bring that up, you know, we have this, and we brought it up before, you know, Sherman Park and all that, just to find out how we can have more access to the lake, you know, to, so that we can utilize what we're, what we're spending. And I know we're not spending as much as other towns, but I would like to figure out, that's another conversation, but.
So, well, as far as the Sherman Park and the Chappag River that we have access to, there's only a small part, and Sherman Park is the only part where we really own. And then there's a false spot of land trust before it turns into South Barry.
Yep.
Boat launch is great. We did fix that up last year, so you could actually use it a little bit easier. But yeah, I would have to agree. I wanna start utilizing that park some more.
Yep.
Okay, so capital plan.
One of the towns last year, the cruise, the pen, the name increased.
I don't know that. I know Bridgewater was given by First Light access to expand their boat launch.
Yes, yes.
There were like eighty acres or something to that effect, that were leased back to Bridgewater, so they can enjoy it and take care of it.
Yeah, that was in the paper, I remember that.
All right, so Kim, you're gonna have to go to capital plan, you're gonna keep going until the whole machines.
Okay, so, okay, proposed with ARPA? No.
No, the one before it.
With visual?
Capital improvement plan should have two green columns.
It's not that one. Mill rate scenario? No.
No. To take capital.
Okay, yep. Got it.
Two green columns?
Yep.
Okay, this is everything that we have on the capital plan. So we have a first line, we have the recurring fifteen thousand dollars for a revow, which is always just gonna continue. Physical assets that we have, our money, there's no allocation there. The next thing is for IT upgrades. Like I said, we will bring Jimmy in for a deeper dive explanation, that's twenty-five thousand dollars. Security and technology upgrades, this was the grants for the cameras, the locks, the AV equipment in this room. Next is a town clerk vault upgrade. We are at a point where we are out of storage for our books and all, so we're going to be moving to the next step to get more racking, map holders, because literally our book, all of our shelves are full at this point, so that's included in here this week, or this year, and then Town Hall software upgrades, we have another twenty thousand dollars. Hydrant Hodge Library renovations was presented by the library board to the Board of Finance, and the Hodge is where they're fixing the windows, getting rid of the store windows. This is kind of a recurring project that's been going up for a few years, and you're almost there. Now, onto our machines and tractors. We have ten thousand dollars, because we're starting to put away for the grader. All the other ones have either been put out, or we have the money there to do so. The next one is the backhoe, which at some point will be replaced, actually in two thousand twenty-six. That's the only two increases we have on public works machinery.
That's great.
Yep. Fire Department, we basically take their recommendations on how they project the lifespan of those units and what they actually cost. I know there's been some talk of combining the rescue truck and truck ten, so they can get one vehicle that's a little bit more utilized for different areas. And then, one thing that we did increase is thirty-five thousand for the police vehicle, which we've already looked into. We've increased that total to sixty thousand dollars, thus the thirty-five thousand dollars extra. You don't see it in this, but part of this is we're not gonna be trading in the old vehicle, we're gonna keep it in case we need a backup vehicle, so the trade-in portion of that line was removed.
Okay.
Okay, on to any questions under that?
No.
Okay, and then Public Works Building Complex, you know, with the extra eighty thousand dollars in grant money, we're not gonna be adding anything to that. There are two large investments that we need to make this year. One of them is that Y for two hundred thousand dollars. In getting the two hundred thousand dollars for paving of public works, you know, upon further research, we have those two underground tanks, ones for heating oil, ones for diesel. And I would rather not pave and then rip them out, so we're gonna try and move that forward, so that is a large number that's moving into this year, but I think it's, we're, we don't have a choice in this matter.
So when is it required that those tanks come out? Isn't there, there's a date? Oh, oh, that's a long ways away, yeah, right, no.
But knowing that the last time this whole area was paved was when this building was built.
Yeah.
You know, I think, I don't wanna have to cut it all up. It's very similar to Weller's Bridge. We're not gonna hate that road until after the bridge is done, after all the construction, or else we'll be doing it again.
That's just gonna cost you more if you wait that long to have all that done, so.
There's just that line for the land, for the North Street purchase, which is now getting closed out. The next is Town Hall Building Maintenance, which is recurring. There is a forty-nine thousand dollar balance after this budget, it'll be fifty-nine thousand dollar balance, and that's for anything that we need on the outside. We still have four more bathrooms to do, two upstairs and two downstairs. This would also include, we were gonna get the new meeting room chairs. The next issue, again, a big issue, is the tennis courts. Last, last year, last year, last fall, you know, I had several different opinions. RS Sports out of Oxford, as well as Classic Turf of Woodbury, they basically have said that the the base, which is asphalt that they put this coating over, can no longer support a new coating, and it needs to be replaced. It's somewhat of a safety hazard now, as it's pulling up, so I'm proposing that we start from scratch, remove it, put in a high-performance concrete, and then we can finish it off. That's gonna be an additional two hundred thousand dollars. But at this point, it's somewhat of a safety concern with the lifting rubber. It's kind of a trip hazard.
Yeah, I mean, for all the things that we don't have in town, you know, that's one facility that gets used so much.
It's important that we keep that going, I would agree. I mean, now, the Booth Free School on Monday nights, they have their, they use it as well, so it's good to see that it's utilized. Minor Memorial Library, that's the exterior maintenance, so windows, wood rock.
Well, I know, I'm the tennis court.
Yes.
What's, we've always had a problem there with water underneath.
Yep.
And that's still.
Yeah, so it's an asphalt base, and then they have this rubberized coating that they apply over it. The problem is that asphalt now is just crumbled. You could just take a screwdriver and stick it right through just about anywhere. So it won't support a new skin on top of it. Like, nobody will warranty it. They're highly advising that we just start from scratch.
Is there work there, or time flying by?
Well, they skin coated it, I believe, six years ago. They redid it again, and then those teams are reopening, but it's gonna happen more frequently, because there's no base. So in order to do it, we're looking at sixty-five to seventy-five thousand dollars to put a new skin over it, with no warranty. Nothing to hold it together, so everyone is suggesting this high-performance concrete that they use, so they've been pouring it. But this is inclusive of basically starting from scratch, you know, a brand-new tennis court.
Okay, sorry.
And then we're able to use a hundred thousand dollars of a low SIP grant, so the actual cost is only gonna be seventy thousand dollars, you could get a forty thousand dollars in there already. Okay, that makes sense, yep. So that's a seventy thousand dollar increase in our capital budget for this year.
So to Russ's concern about the drainage, will that be addressed?
Well, yeah, because it's gonna be built from scratch, so all of that, plus it'll be concrete.
Right, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, they need to put a curtain.
Divided out, yeah. New fence as well, because all of that area is gonna be disturbed.
Right. Okay.
So that price includes the fence?
Yes.
Okay, that's important to know. And so then the curtain.
This was as of last year, by the way, so, you know, again, I'm going with the prices that they gave me as an estimation, so should this bill be, should. So should this bill be, should this budget be approved, we're gonna have to send it out to BIC.
Yeah.
And then we're gonna see where those prices come, come in. Sound good?
Thank you.
All right, so we're seeing the, on the next line, the hundred and sixty thousand dollar STEAM grant for repaving. And then on to the Minor Memorial Library and then the Senior Center. And again, we'll get into that. We have fifty four thousand with no additional money into Heroburg or Sherman Park. But we did change that line because now we've combined those two in that line. So last year, you would have saw that line as Heroburg Park. Now it's Sherman Park as well. So if there is anything that we can do, we can kind of use some of those funds.
Okay.
We continue to put five thousand dollars into containers for the transfer station and whatever else, other repairs we need. And then we have a twenty five thousand dollars that we've added for a wheelchair accessible ban. Since this budget, we've actually lost one of our locals that used the bus a lot. Unfortunately, he passed away. So it was presented as something we need this year. I pushed it off two years so we could split that expense. That can be discussed.
So is that, this is the wheelchair accessible in the line item that says twenty three? So are you saying this?
That would be twenty four, correct?
Okay.
Because we wouldn't have the money until next July.
Okay. So that'll be changed, yeah.
Perhaps, I just really don't know.
Okay.
Yeah.
There actually are, even still, we keep finding corrections. Kim and I met yesterday again, and we still found corrections. So we're gonna go through on all those lines.
Okay, great.
Got it. Okay, so the next, on to, on to the roads and bridges, my favorite. I love this part. Bosford, Bosford Hill is now done, project complete, and it is closed. The next four bridges are the bridges that I'd like to do this year, which are Wakeley, Shallabees, Century. And then the culverts and pipes on Grassy Hill. And the reason why there's no funds here, but there's money here is because from the ARPA funds, we had two hundred and fifty thousand dollars assigned to Squire Bridge, and we paid for it with a STEAM grant. At town meeting this spring, or this winter, we moved the funds over. So now those ARPA funds can be redelegated to, in the same column, infrastructure bridges. So now those four bridges are now completely paid for because, ultimately because of the STEAM grants that we received.
Patrick, congratulations. That was.
You guys do. Really? That's amazing. Davenport is complete. So the reason why you see that negative number is we are still pending state funds. But Kim's done a wonderful job, and it looks like they're kind of moving forward besides some more additional paperwork this week.
Question on Bacon. There's a couple of culverts that need to be replaced.
That's what that is.
That's all of them?
Yeah, we have eighty thousand dollars in for that. So those are the pipes that we're gonna replace along.
I'm not talking just about where Grassy and Bacon are.
Oh, I know the four that are before that. So we're talking from three seventeen over. I believe there's four that we're going to replace.
They're all rotted up.
They're all rotted out. Actually, as of this week, I have another one on South Street where it's starting to collapse. And the road's starting to fall away. But this is, this is your recommendation on fixing all those culverts. That's exactly. So because we're gonna do it as Public Works, I feel like eighty thousand dollars is enough. The biggest cost of that is actually the paving when we're done. You know, when we have to patch pave it after the fact. That's gonna be like literally the biggest cost. The pipes, all we're doing is increasing the size. I meant with Cardinal. So that's gonna be something that Public Works does this year. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. So the.
I can get Sarah.
All right. I mean, he doesn't run away or anything.
Go ahead, Kim.
Is just materials, really, right? Because Public Works is gonna do that. Cost of labor is in another line item anyway. Okay, great. That's why I, the amount seemed low to me as well, thinking now that we have some sense of how much. But not breaking it down like that is helpful. Thank you.
Well, much like Bosford Hill. Now Bosford Hill, we were able to rebuild it, although the granite was there. You know, that ended up costing us about thirty five thousand dollars to redo that bridge. Wakeley, Shallabees, and Century, we're not replacing the culverts. We're not replacing the bridge. We're having a mason come in and rebuild them. One of the problems with Wakeley was because of the salt on the road. It's starting to rust going up. It's a, it's a galvanized arch culvert, and it starts to rust. So working with the engineers, talking with the masons, we're able to cut out the bottom section that's rusted, install a new angle, steel angle, and pour a new foundation on the inside, and we'll have to pump that in. So there is a bit of an inflated cost on that as opposed to Bosford, but there's a lot more work involved.
Yeah, which one is that you're saying? This is?
Wakeley.
Oh, Wakeley, okay, yeah.
Shallabees is an enormous concrete culvert. And, you know, climbing in with masons inside that culvert, we realize that most of the work is surfaced. It actually looks like the wall, the head walls are bowing out.
Right.
We have to rebuild those top four sections. But the culvert itself, it's matte. It's like this huge thick culvert. Every mason's saying that is the best thing going. And a lot of those repairs to be made. I was amazed at how much repairing can be done. Even at a round culvert where they patch and they do injections, and they can really rebuild and increase the lifespan to basically a brand-new bridge for a fraction of the cost.
So I mean, come back down to the Grassy Hill and Bacon Road, what Russ just said. And ask the question, so how many will be replaced with that eighty thousand?
At least five.
Okay, wow.
So we're gonna start from three seventeen and work our way over. The big one is the collapsed head wall at Bacon and Grassy. So that's why that's kind of, kind of set that. But these are basically all of Bacon Road. There are tremendous amount, but it's the three seventeen side that are the worst.
Well, I'm surprised that the amount isn't higher. That's all. That's why I was asking.
All gonna be done probably by Public Works.
No, I understand, but in terms of the cost of materials now and what things are, I was, I'm surprised. Anyway.
Yeah, it's actually, it's a huge win. I mean, so from that reason, yes, let's applaud the win. Again, this is, these are all projects that we're looking at doing this year. So it's not, we're not looking three or four years out. This is stuff that we can accomplish this year. But I don't wanna put too much planning into after that, just based on where the budget's at, being a reval year. Okay, minor bridge is the next one. We are committed to that now. And then this is the last payment for it, which is our fifty percent portion. There's still, the state still has not given any guidance as to increasing the local bridge program. So we are going to be at fifty percent on that. The next is Weller's Bridge. There's five hundred and sixty five thousand. It's that we're allocating for this. This is a hundred percent reimbursement on Weller's Bridge from an engineering, everything. The drafts, as well as right through construction. We've been advised by Connecticut State DOT that we would need by September of two thousand twenty four, one million one hundred and fifty four thousand, which is basically just to put in hold the pay bills as they come up. The replenishment will come in several steps. But although that is a reserve dollar, none of those will actually ever really be spent or because they will all be replenished. So that will end up back in the unassigned fund balance once that the project completes. We are looking at doing that bridge in two thousand twenty five.
Okay.
You can see that the Squire, Squire Road, which is just clearing out that account because that job is done. It came out great. We still have the bridge culvert survey in there, and then the normal hundred thousand dollars in grants for gravel roads chip ceiling. Right now, our capital net is one million one hundred, one hundred and one thousand three, three seventy three. And that's where we stand. Any questions?
Right, the only thing I would say about budgeting the net here is that the grant money we're due back is so far past due because of the problems at the state of Connecticut with employees. You know, they, they lost a lot of employees, retired at the end of last year. They got new people, and they just.
Okay.
It's difficult, to say the least, but but we're getting to the point, you know, Patrick is trying to sign, sign the same documentation, I don't know how many times because they can't seem to. They're, they're, they're struggling in various departments of the state to get this stuff back to us, so. So we need it, and I need to budget the net here. So that show that the money is coming back and it's gonna help fund these projects.
That makes sense.
Okay, do you have a revenue projection, Kim? Give this.
Yep. So it starts with from revenue for capital, region twelve?
Yeah.
So these are all our revenue projections for next year. The three hundred and fifty thousand that we would be getting back from Region Twelve. We do take some from the fund balance, and I'll get into that when we talk about mill rate, fund balance. And then miscellaneous state taxes, interest on investments. We do have a pretty big increase in building department. That is due to an increase in construction around town. There's a lot of big projects that are coming up, so I do not see that as an issue this year at all.
And so that's, that's under miscellaneous?
It's under miscellaneous building department. You'll see it goes from one fifty two to one ninety five. Consistently, the building department does.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I know. You jumped on a line. That's, that's fine. I was still in the other. Okay, got it.
Basically, you know, once you add the grants and the income from the ambulance, senior center, cellphone tower, we're ending up. I'm sorry, we're ending up six hundred and eighty thousand from miscellaneous. And then state revenue, just grants and things that we get, you know, basically replenishment from the other side. So the tree removals, the fifty thousand that we had earmarked for, tree removal just comes back in grant funds. So it's listed on both sides. And then the big announcement. The big announcement is because of the revow, we are looking at a one hundred and fifty seven million dollar increase of the grant list. Two point four increase in revenue. The total grant list went up twenty two point eight one percent. What? The grant list went up this year twenty two point eight one percent. See about that line?
So the, so these are estimates because I don't have the final changes from the Board of Assessment Appeals yet, so.
We do have money planned in there for this.
Right.
So we have an estimate of reduction. We figure that the Board of Assessment Appeals will have that ability to reduce what they, you know, what they need. So there's already an earmarked fund for that. So as it stands right now, that's the
It's just astounding to me that that's, that it's one hundred and fifty seven million dollar increase.
That's in value. That's in assessed value.
Value. I know, assessed value. I'm like, holy, moly.
It's a lot. There are towns that have gone up forty percent.
Really?
It's, it's absolutely changing everything. All right, any questions on the revenue side? It's pretty straightforward.
So you're gonna talk about the mill right now or on the mill rate sheet?
No, I was gonna go through some corrections and things. I was just gonna go through the detail real quick if you guys are okay with that.
Yeah.
And we can go through if you guys have questions or anything. So I'm gonna start in tab six, real.
So you're gonna, what?
And this should be the budget detail, was it called, her files?
Yeah, budget template.
These are all, each department separated.
Yeah.
There are pages in the top, and we can use those for reference.
It's the budget worksheets.
Yeah.
There you go. And then after this, we can go into executive session, and we can talk about the rest, and then we'll get into the rate.
Okay.
All right, so selectmen salaries is pretty straightforward. You're just gonna see the increase in grant procurement incentive on page two, page three. There is a increase, the twenty nine hundred dollar increase of selectmen office outside service. That's where you're seeing that number reflected for the HR program and paychecks. And all the other lines pretty much stay the same. On the next page is just dues, the different, from a finance standpoint, the Governor's Association of Accountants. There's ClearGov that's listed in this for DP support. Everything else pretty much stays the same. Nothing really too much different on treasurer, other than you'll see the increase in hourly for the assistant treasurer. And a normal increase for salary. Page six, if you can see that for town clerk, that line. There is an error here. The actual under twenty two, twenty three, that should not be there, is actually zero. The thirty thousand nine twelve. It's two hundred dollars originally proposed for two thousand twenty two, twenty three. You see, it was proposed at twenty three, twenty four at two hundred dollars, and there's this thirty thousand dollars sitting in there.
Yep. So that should be zero?
Not be there. That is an error.
Okay, great.
There's also a large reduction in microfilming. That's because we go into the clerk software. We're doing away with microfilming. But you'll see a larger increase in town clerk data processing support. So this is a rollover to the new system from CoFile to IQS. Okay, tax collector, pretty straight across the board, other than normal increases, assessors. And again, if you need to stop me on anything, we're good. Board of Assessment Appeals is very nominal and no increase. Board Finance, again, the same. Building Department standard increases, not a huge increase overall. Probate course flat.
So again, the any, the data processing support for all of these, I know I said this to you, you know, yesterday, but just wanna say out loud that, that those fees for, that, that, those changes are gonna be made are gonna be spread across each department?
Yes.
Into the line, okay. I mean, right now, under data processing support, they're not using any of the money. Or it's not showing that it's being used, so.
Right, so if you look, like, if you look at Jimmy's, if you look at the town clerks, budget cam, under microfilming, they always used to pay for their software, CoFile software out of microfilming line. And the DP support is a fairly new line for them. What's been in there is commodized, the full circle support. So now in this coming year, we're gonna take all of their support that's been in the microfilming line and put it down where it really belongs in software.
Okay, good. So does that follow suit for, because I see the DP line on many, you know, most of the others too. So that will go there and be pulled out of that as well if they hadn't been. Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, most every department has a DP support.
My, my comment was that most of them is zero that they use. So I just wanna, I'm just checking and asking.
Because, because we've had to budget support for a system that's really not up and running yet.
Yeah, okay.
So, so, but because since we don't know, we have to have it in there.
I understand. I just was, because it's less.
Yeah.
From twenty twenty one.
I hate to say it, even from when we talk about it, to when we get actually executed, there's price changes, there's new technology coming out. It seems to be we're always fighting this.
Yep.
And learning more.
Good.
Okay, so if you want to catch up, I'm on to like probate, building probate. Crease is page 13 posted delivery.
Yep.
Next on to is Town Hall. There was actually a reduction in telephone. This is kind of a. Kim Baron sideline. To remove the deadlines that we don't actually use, reducing some of our fax machines that we don't use. So we've actually had a reduction in that. You also see a reduction in maintenance contracts for Town Hall. That's because we're utilizing Public Works to do some of our service. Our normal and routine service. So we're seeing a reduction in this. And again, hats off to Public Works and the talented group that we have there, no question. You will see an increase under Town Hall need data support. And that's for all our normal subscriptions. So, you know, Crystal Rock, Amazon Prime, Costco, Paycheck, Staples, Hulu, all the different things. The subscription that we use for Town Hall, that's an increase of about $8,000. And Microsoft 365, that's right.
And what what line item is that?
Uh, it's Town Hall BP support. Okay, any questions? We're on to page 15, which is elections. You're gonna see an increase in hourly. Also, under DP supplies, we have another $2,500 earmarked for supplies to purchase, which we haven't done in years. So this is kind of to refresh what we have for election supplies. Again, all of this is kind of contingent. We don't, we're not sure how many hours we're gonna add, but we had to kind of allow. For this extended hours of election.
Great.
Board of legal fees. You'll see on page 17. You know, hopefully the selectmen will not have as many legal fees as last year. We have some additional things with. The North Street property. Closing out the booth trust. That's someone I would say that's open for discussion. If we should put more, last year we used, so far we've used 11,500. Previous year is 21,900 and now we're fortunately $8,000. That could go up if we wanted to add money to somewhere that wouldn't be a bad spot to do it.
Yeah, it just it seems like even in 2021, it was close to 6,500. And I mean, that's a huge jump. I know there was a lot going on 2122, but. We're already over. I don't think 8,000 is. Is enough of a safety net there in terms of planning.
Can I can I just step? Can I just add one thing here? All of these lines are kind of placeholders for legal fees. So in any given year, you know, you've only got three years here, but. But like, if you look down, say at well, you know, back in 2021, there's a lot going on with the woods and all of that. And that and that took a lot of the. Legal fee cost there, but but we kind of keep that the same because if you see subsequently. You know, they don't, they really didn't have a whole lot.
And the other departments too. So if we look at the legal fees for tax collector assessor, you know, some of those. Can be a wash if they're not going to utilize them. And again, it's just which bucket it comes into.
Okay.
If you look at it from a bottom line's perspective of actuals proposed.
Yep.
You know, there's, there's a lot of money there. And we're not necessarily utilizing it all. So again, maybe that's a question of itemizing it in more detail. But overall, there is a big, there is a big amount in there.
Okay.
We were a total of an additional $6,000. But a little bit of that is, you know, inland wetlands, some of these things that went up.
Have you got any bills on the Garnet Road? Coronary?
No, we had not because the last quarter didn't include it, maybe some of it.
Yeah, not not a whole lot, no.
Well.
Because that's all, because that's all.
We have received consultant fees though.
7200.
Yeah, a couple thousand, but.
Yep. The money well spent.
She's pulling, she's pulling people, other lawyers in. I mean, we had a court date. And she had the consultant and another arbitrator lawyer show up. And then. However, they didn't have a lawyer, so the judge wouldn't go forward. So we wasted a lot of money just.
I know.
And I see. I think it could get expensive because I don't see her cooperating. And I see the judge kind of tricking her with kid gloves.
It's a little frustrating, but.
It is.
Again, money well spent. We need to be able to stand up for.
Oh, absolutely, because everybody's watching.
Ourselves, correct. Absolutely. It's often in the news. Yep. Okay, so we'll see what happens.
I mean, if you want to add money, you can do whatever you want.
No, I think this is good because.
Yeah, no, that's a good.
They'll get a lawyer and he'll talk some sense into it.
Right.
Yeah.
I think it's better budget wise to kind of stay the course, but obviously. You know, we had to increase because she hasn't increased her fees in 20 years or whatever she.
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, again, this is animal control is the next line, you know, much like Illinois, and I had something that we were split up with other towns. Town reports have stayed flat. And then on to section seven, land use compensation. This is for basically Julie and Karen. And John. Next is a planning, no real increase there. Zoning is actually a little bit of a reduction. There's, we haven't included everything into this budget. There's still some things that we could. One of them is. Zoning codification and putting these zoning regulations online. There's about a dollar amount in there in this budget for that, for hiring a consultant, reviewing our zoning recs. Making sure that they're compliant and up to date. So that's still something that is not in this budget that we're gonna have.
Yeah, I I think that's something we really need to seriously consider because. Now, the the volunteer group, you know, we just can't go through and do that ourselves. It's it would be taking eternity and. I think it's helpful to have someone from the outside assist.
Absolutely. We tried for a year. I agree, you know, we were gonna go through it month by month each section and it it is very complicated. And to have someone more of a legal sense. So, you know, if we wanted to put in, you know, $20,000 for that, I think that'd be money well spent. But again, I wanted to present the cleanest budget I could. So again, we can talk about that afterwards, probably after the section. So that's still a talk. And then legal fees, if you guys want to continue talking about that, that's good as well. Conservation's flat. Inland wetlands is the increase in consultants. I'm sure, yes.
Yeah.
Good. Volunteer recognition, $2,000. There was the 21. Where we spent a lot of money and that was barber's basic going away. They call it for volunteers. There wasn't inflated cost there. Overall, we should be, you know, back where we were at the 2,000. Historic district flat, historic buildings flat. Senior Center, a small increase of $3,000 overall. And most of that's heating oil and electric. Senior Center programs, we are up about $1,000, but again, that's going to be reduced by the collection. And you'll see the reverse of that on the revenue line. Library, you know, about 4,000. And then other expenses. Where's the big increase there? Okay, Lake Illinois, again, we've. They don't need more stuff. Yes, yes.
Yeah, great.
Fundraising.
Yeah, yeah.
I know.
That's how we look. I mean, I look at all of this as, you know, every time there's an expense, okay. You know, what are what are the grants that are out there? And I will say it's gotten gotten tougher. Just if I could just share a quick story. I was contacted by Jahada Hayes, Chief of Staff, about the, they have a congressional award that they can do. For community programs and things and. With the chief of staff, her chief of staff and myself, we went through every single grant line. And we did not qualify for anything. And I've been talking about this for a while. If we don't have public transportation, we don't have a disadvantaged community. We we don't have public water. We don't have public sewer. We don't live next to the water. We don't have a train. We don't have a bus. Every single thing in a grant perspective, since all this focus on infrastructure, we do not qualify for very little. That's why I was pushing for the local bridge program, which is now being discussed in legislature. Again, we don't have any decisions. But I'm looking at it from, and this is through council of small towns, cost, CCM, and through our cog. That's something that we need to have some kind of share of this and and we need it from a roads and bridges standpoint. But the availability for grants is getting tougher and tougher, but I'm going to continue to fight. Okay, we're on to recreation. As we discussed, there's some more programming dollars in there and they'd like to do more events now that. Covid is kind of wrapping up and people want to do more events. I want to kind of continue and encourage that. And then page 36 is just the swim ponds, which again moved to town parks. Okay, next is page 37, public works overtime, just a normal increase in wage. Town roads paving, you will see the actual under paving, other expenses, $10,000, the line before the total. On that page 38 is $10,000.
Yeah.
I just want you guys to see that, you know, that's another thing that flags we haven't spent, but you know, a little bit and it's correct back to it. That was Squire Road paving that fell into that line. So the actual is actually being replenished with a grant. But it does show on that line, just to see if you guys question that, why is it so much?
Okay.
You know, as opposed to what we're budgeting. Everything else is pretty flat.
Okay, helpful. Thank you.
And then again, the next page 39 is your increase in salt and sand prices. We're just protecting projecting. It's it's got, we are in an inflationary period. I'm very, very confident and happy at our percentages right now based on where we sit. Page 40, again, marginal increases, pretty flat across the board, other than calcium chloride and obviously expenses are increasing. Page 41, again, we're seeing salt and sand increases. And then, of course, garage and salt barn maintenance, a lot of this stuff is going to fall under. What's been nice is we could both have this fall under our steep grid.
Which one?
A lot of that would be replenished. Town garage, salt barn. A lot of normal improvements that we would put through, now we're putting through so we can get compensated for them. Okay, more, just to reflect, it's a maintenance or repair expense. So this is a list of every single vehicle. Notable things on here. You look under actual, there's a zero under truck number eight, which is repairs, parts, quarry. That's because that was the truck that was just rebuilt.
You're going to put in truck numbers with those names as well?
Actually, if you look over to the left of the the account numbers, they correspond to the last three digits.
I know, but that's, you've done it all. Just thinking about consistency. That's all.
Got it.
I don't think anybody else is gonna understand that that's where you go.
I wrote it and in my defense, I learned that two days ago.
Okay. I had no idea.
But it was the same detail and it was the same number, so I'm right there with you.
Okay.
So based on how we've been working out of the vehicles, you know, rebuilding the loader, a lot of these numbers have come down, which is great. Which is offsetting the increase in gas, diesel tires, all those other things. We're seeing an increase overall. But again, hands off to Public Works. They're doing an amazing job. And then that just continues with normal increases. Like I said, you'll see the tires in there. And we're up about $18,000 in total repairs for all of our vehicles. Surveys engineers, I kind of touched on that before. This is the. The Town Hall Public Works, Hodge Park and the transfer station. And then this is also falls under bridge assault assessments and consultation for public works projects. Because I do need an engineer to sign off, even if we're going to be doing work ourselves, so that we're doing the work correctly and to spec. But tree maintenance, there's $50,000 earmarked. We spent 31,000 this year, but that is going to be replenished through LOSE funds. Town parks, this is, you know, the pavilion. There are some things that we need to get done this year. Painting the kitchen, making the bathrooms, plus some upgrades that we'd like to do. There is also DP support in there. Just so you guys know. Daryl from Virginia did donate that Skylink, Sky.
Starlink.
Starlink. Starlink. And so now we're going to have the maintenance, or at least the subscription on that, but that that part is looking great. Okay, odds nine. Section nine, page 48. Again, normal increases along the way and then some additional benefits. We're also giving them some, an allowance for some of their personal equipment. So you're gonna see that under the equipment line. And that's about really the only change. Onto state, state police salary. $95,000, we're keeping that flat and a reduction in overtime because we have more officers, so we're hoping to reduce that. It does show as zero actual, that's because it's paid yearly. Like some of the subscriptions that you'll see when it comes to be paid yearly. Or agency services recruitment stays at $500. And private duty is still going to be $1,000. That is, again, one of those lines that's captured revenue. From private hire. So that's gonna sit on both sides. It'll sit on the expense side, but it'll also sit on the revenue side.
Oh, right. Okay, that makes sense. Okay, answer my question. Yeah.
Okay, page 52, you'll see that giant increase in paramedic contracts and that's, we've talked about that quite a bit. Fire Department, again, this is relayed from them. We just recently got that budget, so we're kind of reviewing it to go forward. We don't have access to their total budget. Fire Marshal, again, just about the same, just a normal increase. Age 55, something you don't see is that liability insurance. We have a $14,000 reduction in that line. And that's because it was overestimated.
Well, that it was. The cyber policy. Came down quite a bit premium after we we budgeted, over budgeted for it last year. But then the actual cost came down, so. So we're able to save so many.
That's a win.
Yeah.
And then streetlights, you know, a normal earmark. The next big change is going to be on page 57. Still preparedness. So during Covid, some of these other expenses, you can see we had seven, if you go to other expenses, we had 17.5 and now we're at five. This is really like the task kits, the math masks. Special protection, the Plexiglas that was on the on the counters, sanitizer signage. As well as unemployment paid during Covid. So that's why that price, that figure continues to move down as we kind of exit and move forward away from Covid. Any questions on that? Okay, page 58, 911 system, flat. Section 10, 59. Section ten, fifty-nine, page fifty-nine. Is for the Ridgefield Visiting Nurses Association.
So can you explain why it's, what the, what these numbers are?
So what this is, is we kind of earmark an amount, so we would pay for the VNA. So we allocate fifty hours of time. Whether we use it or not.
Okay.
So if we needed to, you know, pay VNA, up to fifty hours, we already have budgeted.
So is this saying that we haven't used them at all, and that's just a donation?
Correct. Well, no, no, because if you'll notice, we haven't used it.
Well, it says actual. I'm, I'm talking about the other years. It's the same, forty nine hundred and then four hundred and ninety dollars.
That's because we used that, like ten hours of it or whatever, or five hours of that time from them. But it's earmarked if we did.
It's just funny that it's the same amount. I just, that's why.
Well, it's ninety-eight dollars an hour, so.
Okay.
But we've had very little usage of it in the last couple of years.
Okay.
Previous years we had more, but it's, we budget fifty hours.
Okay. All right, good. Just, just curious, because of an interesting percentage there. I was like, huh.
And that, so it's big figures like that too, that are adding to our assigned fund balance. So kind of remember all these things that we aren't spending, that we have earmarked, that's how come we have an inflating on the side fund balance, and that's where the extra money comes from. So this is for cross-reference standpoint, that's going to come in later.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Page sixty, vital stats is flat. Sixty-one, we have an increase in the salary line, some dues. Again, you're going to see that DP support line, but overall, not a huge increase, and then some printing extra. Page sixty-two is kind of a placeholder as well, just much like VNA. This is money that we earmarked, so we had to add to it, just to go towards resident relief funds. Page sixty-three, Newtown Health District, basically flat. We, we pay to be part of that organization. Page sixty-four, the added drivers are included in this. But everything else pretty much stays flat based on repairs. Page sixty-five, we do have a slight increase for outside services or AJP Trucking, who manages that for us. And hauling is down, but tips fees are up. Any questions on that? Overall, it's a net loss. It's actually a reduction. Okay, page sixty-six, insurance benefits. This is a plan of seven percent per state recommending, or the state was up seven percent. So this is our projection. It is an increase of $11,000 year over year. Again, personal benefits, sick time, holiday, just the increase in normal wage and how that gets into reserve. Next page, FICA, again, all based on employment percentage that would change should that amount change. Medicare, again, portion of holding. And then the pension, which was overestimated, as you saw in the budget. And I did, well, we, we kept a land acquisition flat, so we're at page seventy-two. You know, we sort of hold more, again, we could always address that if you wanted to, if we had things, but right now we're good.
Yeah.
Seventy-three ordinance codification, now this is just the maintenance of it. Now that's been corrected, and it's now online. Copy your fax machines is flat. And the computer upgrades is a zero because that line is moving. That goes to the department breakdown, like they could continue with appropriations instead of having it every year. Still have the $33,000 in contingency. You know, is it just, just for our budget that we can move money if we absolutely need to? We haven't necessarily utilized it, and obviously the COVID contingency is out. Memorial Day is still the same budget. And we're flat on Christmas miscellaneous. Page seventy-nine, education, that's that increase we saw. And if, hopefully you guys have this in the back. This black cage.
Not on this, I don't.
Oh, this shows you the increase. So Roxbury's total increase was 68,621. It ends up becoming a little bit more than that once you extend it out. Washington's school budget increase was 369,666. And Bridger Waters was 666,116. Definitely a different looking, and that's it. So. All things being equal. It's not bad.
No, it's not bad at all.
The talking points for this are going to be found, you know, basically in that section two. Of what our overall budget increase is. Our imposed budget is an increase of 3.03%. I'd like to, unless there's any other public questions, I'd like to go to an executive session, if that's okay. And do we have any comments for Kim at this time?
Nope.
No. Very clear.
Yes.
This is.
I will embarrass, other than a couple little things and corrections, I am incredibly impressed and proud that I got to present this to you guys today. Thank you.
Kim, your letter was very, very good. I really.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I couldn't hear it just second.
Your, your letter at the beginning of all of this was very well written and very clear.
Thank you.
Okay, so can I get a motion to move to executive session?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor? All right, okay, I'm going to stop the recording now. All right, so I'd like to call back this order, this meeting of the Board of Selectmen, special meeting. We had a motion to come back into, into the meeting by Kim, seconded by Russ. And, you know, we, we did have some adjustments, but are we ready to vote on the budget moving forward as presented? With the corrections?
I'll make a motion to approve the budget as presented with corrections discussed during an executive session. And send it off to the Board of Finance.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So. Second.
Excellent. Hi, Kim, thank you very much. That was great. I don't believe we just went through the whole budget in one meeting. Job well done. Thank you.
Hey, thank you very much. That was awesome.
All right, enjoy your day, both of you.